Do we have any announcements?
On Thursday, March 21st, wear your most colorful, spunky socks in celebration of people with Down Syndrome and the many ways they make our world brighter. People all around the world will be celebrating with you. Thank you.
Along with that announcement, I just want to let you guys know that I committed to Penn State. So, thank you. No, saving money, go to Burke's first.
Public to be heard on agenda items only.
My name is Chris Yon from Upper Providence Township. I'm just here for the Policy 707 update. I'm the rec director at Spring Ford Youth Basketball. We've been to one of the meetings over the summer and again in January, and so the update affects us greatly. We have over 1,500 kids in the league, and so as it's written, it would be a big change for us.
My name is Marty Magazzolo. I'm also a member of Upper Providence here. I've had many kids go through the school system, and I'm a member of the Spring Ford Youth Basketball. And although we understand the intent of 707, which is to try to balance out the costs, it's a pretty big burden to put on an organization that's not-for-profit in short order. So, we're looking to understand what the timeframe is and what potential remediation activities we have. Thanks.
So, we're going to make one agenda change. Under action items, A, we're going to move off and put that on for next week. And I'd like to move property G up as an action item. You okay with that, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Whatever.
I would suggest we then have one more comment just at this point, since it was only going to be a work session item tonight. If we're going to take action, we should see if there's a comment.
I was going to do that when we made the motion, but that's okay.
I had no doubt.
Right. So, just, okay, is there any other comment related to, on the agenda item, property, item G, which is administration recommends approval. Why is there a lot of feedback? Oh, your microphone's on.
So, Mark, you're here.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, we should announce that Mr. Dennett's on the line this evening. I didn't know that. Well, Mr. Dennett is joining us from Australia, down under. Welcome, Mark. I don't know if you can hear us, but glad you were able to make it. So, anyway, action item G, which is administration recommends approval for a design service by Crabtree Robot Associates for Ram Stadium Sewer Connections. Funding will come from the maintenance budget and shall not exceed $18,000. For those questions, that was, I reported on this last month, we're looking at running SEOR to the Ram, McNally, Ram Stadium, which is the baseball stadium behind the high school. So, I want to make, move that to an action item. So, is there any comment on that? Okay, so we'll move that as an action item. With that, do I have an, an action item, or do I have a motion to approve action items as new A, which I just read, and B?
Still moved.
Second. Motion second. Any comment? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. Great. We have some presentations this evening. Ms. Bagnati, principal of Limerick Elementary School, and looks like she brought some friends with her.
I'm going to apologize upfront. I'm at day 18 of battling a little chest infection, so I apologize for the voice and the coughing. But, good evening. It's so nice to see everybody. I am Lori Pignati, principal of Limerick Elementary School. Thank you so much for allowing myself and some Limerick celebrities here to present tonight on our High Five social expect, pro-social expectations for behavior. When I first arrived at Limerick mid-August, I noticed that we were lacking with schoolwide common language for expectations. So, something I brought with me was our High Five behaviors. And Mr. Hughes, school counselor, has been a pivotal part of bringing it to life, and so I'm going to turn it over to him at this time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pignati, and good evening to everybody. What I'll be speaking about is how we have taken Ms. Pignati's High Five behaviors and incorporated them into everyday school life here at Limerick. So, what we'll see through the PowerPoint is some examples of how High Five behaviors are represented in the classrooms, how we use them schoolwide, and how we then celebrate these behaviors in our students. And that's what we have, some examples of those students who have been celebrated so far with us today. I don't have a clicker. Can we? Great. Here's what the High Five rules are. This is what's posted outside of every classroom in our school. We have be responsible, be respectful, be there and be ready, follow directions, and use self-control. As we kicked off our school year, these were reviewed by all classroom teachers, and also as part of our first pro-social assembly, we took time to go through what each behavior's going to look like in our classrooms, what they look like in our cafeteria, in our playground, in our hallways, and especially with these students, what we expect them to be doing outside of our school. This is part of our pro-social initiative, where we're trying to train our students to be representative of community members, too. And we feel that these five High behaviors will certainly help them beyond their schooling. This is an example, our High Five slip collection box. So, each classroom teacher, along with any instructional assistants, receives High Five slips, which look just like this one. We have our specialists have these as well, so does our school nurse and all cafeteria staff. And any student who represents one of these High Five behaviors can receive one of these slips. They get their name put on there, along with their grade and their class, a check for which High Five behavior what they were demonstrating that day, their teacher's signature and the date. One of these slips will go inside the High Five box, so there's a sneak peek inside that box right there. The other slip gets to go home. So, it's just an example of how parents get to see their High Five behaviors and their students come home each day. And we certainly see the students that receive these walking down the hallway or putting their boxes, always have big smiles on their face, and are always able to tell exactly what they were doing to receive these High Five behaviors. Once those High Five slips are in the box, we do weekly drawings to pull them out on our morning announcements. There's two of our announcers, Maddie and Joey, pulling out a High Five slip on the announcement. And students who receive that, once their slip is pulled out, go up to the office to get a High Five pencil. We do happen to have some of those High Five pencils with us today, which we'll be able to pass out to some board members after we're done this part of the presentation. This is done usually every week, and we pull out four or five slips at a time. Those students get to go to the office, and they bring that pencil home. But every student who has received a slip will at least get to take the slip home to acknowledge to their parents that they demonstrated that High Five behavior while at school. Now, we move on to seeing what one of our quarterly celebration assemblies looks like. Here's an example of a slide that's put up. This is when we have in our entire school, we'll join in the gym once a quarter, and we highlight some of the things that were done. Here's an example from Mrs. Kravitz's first grade class. This was put up in front of the school, and Mrs. Kravitz shared this with the school as those students were celebrated. Here's her class earning all their brownie points twice this year. They chose to have extra recess and got to spend a day with their stuffed animals. Some specific students are then highlighted for clipping up on the chart, and some other students are highlighted for an academic achievement on extra math. Again, this was done with the whole school present in the gym, and this is an example of a quarterly classroom celebration. The next example is we also include our specialists in celebrating our students. This one's from Mrs. Ellison in music's class. She highlighted work that our first graders were doing with learning the Star Spangled Banner. Again, highlighted in front of the whole school as we all come together to celebrate these achievements. For our specific High Five award winners for each quarter, we take one of those behaviors and we exemplify, or to use those students that were exemplifying that behavior within our classroom. These are, next through slides are photos that come right from that assembly. You see, those students have their names called, they have their paper read off with their achievement on it, and they receive a big High Five from Ms. Pignati. We do have the High Five slip here with Ms. Pignati. We'll do that in just a second. And they receive a certificate. Again, our specialists are involved this as well. It's really a whole-school-wide initiative. They read off their classrooms that demonstrated that. So, with the second quarter, we highlighted respect, and the students you see before you today were chosen as exemplifying respect in their classrooms. Their teachers have some examples of the High Five behaviors that they did, and we'll reenact that part of the assembly with you today, as the teachers will get a chance to read off that certificate, and you'll get a chance to see what the certificate looks like. After students are given the certificates, they have one to take home to display at home, whether on the refrigerator, in a bulletin board, however they want to do that, and then one gets put up onto our High Five Wall of Fame, which is located prominently right inside our main lobby. If any of you have ever been into our building, you have the main entrance to the office, and then right there next to that is the entrance where all students would come in off the bus. So, any kind of parents that are walking into school, anyone that's coming in, will get a chance to see this High Five Wall of Fame with all the certificates. And each one of the certificates has the student's picture and the reason they were chosen for that High Five behavior. This currently is our High Five Wall of Fame for respect. We have our next quarter assembly coming up within a few weeks. Believe it or not, the school year is flying right along, and we'll reset that and put the next set of High Five winners up there. So, at this time, I'd like to invite one of our classroom teachers to come up, read some of their slips, and we'll have their students respond to some of their thoughts about High Fives are working here in school.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Kristen Williams. I teach fourth grade at Limerick. I selected two young men to receive their award for respectful behavior. The first young man is Evan. You need to stand here, Evan. Evan demonstrates respect for the staff and students every day. He performs his off, office safety patrol job. He's polite, diligent, and he does everything with a smile on his face. So, this is Evan Din. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Now, we asked Bryce and Evan, if you guys wouldn't mind stepping up here real quick, to share briefly some of the reasons why they feel respect was an important High Five behavior to show in the classroom.
I think it's important because you want to be treated, well, you want to treat others the way you want to be treated, and I want to be treated with respect.
And you certainly demonstrate that for others and for yourself, Evan. Thank you very much. And I'm back. And as we rehearsed this earlier today, it seems like some ideas were shared, so we decided a quick little moment to refresh. Same question, Bryce. How, why do you think showing respect in the classroom is an important thing to do?
Other people can hear the teacher, and if you're not talking, they'll understand what the teacher's saying.
Perfect. Thank you. It helps us as we connect with other people, but also helps us with our learning. Very nice job, Bryce. Thank you.
I have two of my star students here. I have Ms. Chloe Bentman and Ryan Brier, and they just show all of our High Five behaviors all the time, on the playground, in the classroom. They are so kind, no matter who I partner them up with. They are, they're helpful, they're kind, and they are just willing to chip in and help anybody, even if somebody's a little different or struggling, I can count on them. Or if somebody's having a bad day, I can say something, they'll go over and help cheer them up. So, to Chloe and to Ryan, thank you. And congratulations.
And the question we had for Ryan and Chloe, while we've been talking about respect in this assembly, we certainly recognize that those other High Five behaviors are important. So, if you wouldn't mind sharing something you saw this school year that was showing how one of those other High Five behaviors was important?
When someone's pencil box fell, you can help them pick it up.
And that's a great example of helping other people be there and be ready for our school day. You see, the High Five behaviors work both with our academics and with our pro-social plan. Same question, Ryan?
When I saw somebody at recess and they looked sad, and I wanted to play with them.
Again, connecting with other people and helping them, being there for other people as they need help, that's the exact kind of influence we want to have on these children, and see them show that on other examples, just like being on the playground. Thank you very much, guys.
Hi, Erin Marcellus, third grade. I have Victoria with me. Victoria was in my class last year as well. We moved up together, so I've had her for a while. She is always demonstrating respect with both adults in the school and her peers. She is a leader in our classroom in a wonderful way and is, has mastered the skill of sharing a disagreeing opinion and still delivering it respectfully. And she really sets an example for the rest of the class. So, thank you, Victoria.
Now, the question we had for Victoria was what it felt like to be at the assembly and to be asked, to be called up, to be recognized in front of everybody for the things that you're achieving this year?
I was excited because I know only two people in each class, in the grade, get one every marking period, so it felt special, too.
Yes, it's an honor not to be taken lightly, and certainly well-earned, Victoria. Thank you very much. Let's give one more round of applause for all the students that came out today. So, as you could hear from the students, it's certainly a school-wide initiative that has impacted them well beyond the classrooms. And we have some, several of our other staff members representing today, representing our specialist department, Mr. Riordan over here as well, other classroom teachers, Mrs. Stroup, one of our special education teachers, all of which are a part of this team to help make these High Five behaviors a part of our fabric of our life at Limerick. And it's certainly been well-accepted. We're looking forward to doing it for a number more years. Thank you very much, everybody.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
How long, how long, how long have we been doing pro-social themes at the elementaries?
Pro-social themes? For as long as, it was before my time, and I've been here for now 11 years. Yeah, there was, it's been an initiation that was happening before I came in, and it's been something that's continued to grow throughout that time.
Yeah, in all of our elementaries.
All of the elementaries have, you know, some sort of pro-social theme and agenda that they use.
That's a nice take on it.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
And we just want to say thank you for being so respectful that the students have a special High Five pencil for each of you. So, go ahead.
How long has this program been going?
Just since I started.
Oh, this is the first year?
Yeah.
And the kids seem to really embrace it since you started.
They've been incredible, and just seeing everybody stop at the main entrance and, you know, no matter what people are at school for, it's really become a nice focal point of our building.
And how about the parent feedback with the kids bringing a slip home?
Any parents want to speak to that? What was it like when your child brought home not only the slip, but also the certificate? Mrs. Moyer?
I'm proud of it. I won. I'm just happy that he's getting the award, being respectful, because that's what he tried to do. Respectful behavior. All the High Fives. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
And I'm fortunate enough to speak to that as a, as a parent, as well as a staff member. My own sons have brought home those slips. It becomes the first thing they want to share when they come home that day. I got a High Five slip that day, and instead of like, what happened today, what was the thing that happened at school today, they can speak to it right away because it's checked off, and you can hear that in there. So, it's definitely a proud moment as a parent, too.
And even when we celebrate on the morning announcements, we do make sure we read specifically what the children are doing, so that they're hearing that being respectful can look, you know, very different. It, you know, isn't just one thing. So, that's why we decided with the guidance of the principal's advisory committee to really be specific with the certificates. The teachers have now started reading everything. The first assembly was trial and error, but it was really great to see in our last assembly, where they read specifically what the children are doing, so that they really are serving as those role models. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Great job. Okay, next on the agenda.
Okay, hello, everybody. Oops. I didn't break that, did I? I didn't break that, did I? I didn't break that. No. No, 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 no. I don't want a stool. I'm good. I just wanted to make sure I didn't break that as we're getting started here. Okay, so, I think many of you know, we've had many updates over the last three years that in policy committee, we have been working diligently to revise Policy 707 and the use of school facilities, keeping in mind that Spring Ford is about the education and the school first, but also wanting the members and affiliated members of our community to have access to use that to keep their programs alive, which in very many ways, we recognize benefit our students as well. So, we have spent a lot of time revising the language, beginning with, you know, the, all the way from the purpose, as you'll see, as we go through all of the slides, you'll see, we just tore everything apart and build it back up. The fees, which I'm sure everybody wants to get to those slides right away, but give us a little bit of time, and we'll get to those. You'll see that we tried to keep in mind the information that was provided to us by Mr. Cooper, who used to be here, by Mr. Hunter, and really also had Mr. Fink look at it. So, none of these numbers that you see here were made in isolation or made just by one person. It was a group effort, and many eyes went on here, and many discounts were provided to try to make it more palatable. So, hopefully you'll see that information as we're going through, especially those of you that were up earlier and that had seen some of the earlier drafts. We made further revisions to try to make it work for everybody. Okay? So, we'll get started. Did you want me to start with the?
The purpose and the boards.
Okay. Yeah, so, you'll see that the purpose, the board recognizes the needs of parent and community to utilize district facilities for educational, cultural, recreational, civic, or social purposes when they are not scheduled for district programs or maintenance. District facilities are intended for use primarily by the schools and district, and then by the residents and community groups, which are located within the district's boundaries. So, this revised policy will include procedures for granting permission to use the school facilities, the activity classification groupings, the fees and charges established by the business office, the rental fees and service charges, they will be specific, and on an addendum that you'll see later in this presentation, the application approval procedures and guidelines, and the insurance requirements for facility usage. Okay. That's one. Do you want me to go right to?
Thank you.
Yeah. You'll follow up when it gets hairy. Okay. We also did a policy review, and you'll see that the initial policy was adopted all the way back March 25th, 1991. As I'm sure many of you were very young at that time, I was still in college. It was a long time ago. It needed revisions. The current policy was last revised May 24th of 2010. Again, nine years ago. That's, that's a chunk of time. So, you'll see the added, the added addendum 707C addresses us custodial charges for PTAs, home and school associations, the Athletic Booster Club, the Spring Ford Music Association, and the Spring Ford Educational Foundation. On April 11th of 2016, this policy was listed on the policy committee agenda. That's 2016, folks. We're now in 2019. So, it's important that we look at this thoroughly. One of the first things we did was look at the local districts. What are they doing? How are they doing use of facilities in comparison to what we're doing? So, we looked at Pots Grove, Central Bucks, Boyertown, Downingtown, Owen J., PV, Methacton. We really tried to hit a number of districts, some that were similar to Spring Ford, and some that were a little bit different, to see how they created their policies, what information they had included in there, and what their fee schedules looked like as well. I also want to comment there, we also looked at the 422 Sports Plex. Remember, we looked at that as well, and the new facility that offers rentals. I don't remember what that's called. What is it called?
All sports.
All sports, all sports. We looked at those two as well. So, even beyond school districts, we looked at those to really look at the numbers. Okay, I think, are we off to page five?
Somebody go?
Yeah, take a turn.
I don't want to break this. You already broke it. Okay, so I'll walk you through some of the substantive changes. So, application for rental, so we tried to clarify the time. You'll see, you'll see up on the screen, it says 3 of 28. So, for board members that have the policy in front of them, there's 28 guidelines. That's number three. So, if you want to go see the specific language on clarification for timeframe, then we changed 60 days notice from 30. That's 4 of 28. And then finally, for the applications establishing the, some closed dates, because as Mrs. Zoski said, we have, first of school, and want to make sure that we have our employees taking care of certain days where we're not open based upon the facility rental piece for the certain groups. The next was the appropriate use of facilities. There had been some questions in there under number 5 of 28 on a clarity for the open, use of the open flame, canned heat for different events. We adjusted the end time back to 9:30 on weekdays and 10:30 on weekends, so that things could go wrapped up by 10:30 and 11 for our employees. And then we clarified for any misuse that happens where people are not following along with the, with our requirements to the loss of privilege for the organization if there are, if some extreme circumstances of not following along or sharing, sharing registrations or clarity on the safety and security issues as well. Then we get on to the fees established by the business office. Already in, in the current policy, there were two special circumstances by the business office, thus with the YMCA for the before and after-school care, and then our summer camps. So, we added two additional areas in here for the business office to, in essence, negotiate rates based upon the structure for long-term facility rental agreements. So, organizations that know they're using them for a long period of time over a current piece to sit with the chief financial officer, take a look at what the needs are and the availability, and then make some decisions based upon the usage. And then finally, for PIAA postseason use of the facilities, try to clarify how that would work out in terms of the outside groups using the facilities. That's long-term and PIAA. So, the next one here has to do with building door security during rentals, which I know is never a topic for anyone here today, in terms of the evenings and coming in and handles missing and all that other fun stuff because of school security. But the clarity here is doors may not be propped open for any reason, and the main entrance area cannot be unattended, that the doors are locked in the evenings depending upon the grouping, and just try to clarify that as best we could. As you guys know, with what's going on in social media and out in the society with people coming in and out of buildings, and now we hear with some people are now purposely testing doors in different areas. It's something that's got to be addressed, and we want to make sure that, that that is consistent for us across the policy. It's not a change, it's just more clarity on the language there from our current policy. I know some people felt there was a change this year coming in, but it wasn't. It was more actually we're following along with the policy. Get to the classifications, as we said, there's four classifications. Technically, there's probably five, because we've split out Class 1 into 1A and 1B. 1A being the actual buildings themselves, the principal oversight on the use of facilities for, facilities that are going, organizations and, I'm sorry, for events, thank you. Events that are going on right directly from the building, whether it's a contest under Mr. McDaniel, or whether they're regular concerts that are going on as a part of our building, or the principal's calling an evening event, those type of things. That's what the 1A is, and then closely associated, that will be 1B. So, for 1A here, you'll see the language of rental fees and service charges, which there will be a description of those two items a little later, but it just lays out where the, how the fees and the charges are for, for the 1A group. That last statement there talks about 1A groups, buildings that are, are groups that are having events where all the money's going out. So, that's a question about fundraising, and right now, the recommendation coming through on that is if there's a 1B, 1A group that has a fundraiser and all of the money is going out of the district, the recommendation is to at least cover half of the service charge that will be associated on a weekend for the, what the service charge covers, half of that of the 1B group, to cover that charge, as opposed to it all going out because of the, the cost that it comes to the district for having the event on a Saturday or Sunday. Into 1B, these are our booster clubs. Into 1B, these are our booster clubs, for examples, and I know it's small font up there. So, this is, no rental fees at all associated with 1B, and service charges apply for 1B activity based upon the chart that we'll share with you in a little while, and primarily weekend usage, including fundraisers to cover the cost. It talks there a little about fundraisers, but most of the, all of these organizations, all their money seems to come right back into the, and support the programs that they're designed for. And as was mentioned, the bottom bullet down there at the bottom talks about the Class 1B organizations. The, a memory of understanding that Mrs. Zoski mentioned before, had four free service charge organizations as a part of the MOU that took place in 2010. This here in the proposal coming from the committee is having one event each year without service charges. That's again, coming from the recommendation. So, that MOU would get wrapped into that, and instead of 4B, 1. You'll see that later on when you look at the numbers. Then finally, I'm not finally, Class 2 Organizations. These are our community recreation leagues, community theater groups, service organizations, and so there's no rental fees, and Class 2 would have a service charge apply for activities based upon the schedule for charges that we'll share with you. Class 3, the organizations that are more than, less than 50% Spring Ford-related, and they may have paid coaches as a part of that, or paid people inside the organization to use the facilities, so, and AAU basketball teams will be an example of that. And then finally, Class 4 is everyone else outside of 1, 2, and 3 that hasn't been categorized to date that are outside of the, that are still in the community, but not meeting those classifications of Class 2, more than 50%, and nonprofit, and Class 3, larger than 50%, I'm sorry, less than 50% of the population. Here, you take this, yeah?
Okay, so popping over to some of the, I can't lower that anymore, I'm going to break that mic.
Don't break it.
It's going to break me. So, we're going to define the difference between rental fees and service charges. Service charges, well, we'll start with rental fees. Rental fees are defined as fixed charges for the use of facilities. That covers deterioration, wear and tear, those types of more global, more general fees that we're saying are part of that, okay? The service charges are specifically related to the costs for using the facility, the cost that it costs the district that are accrued because that is being used. So, what the taxpayers are paying are those service charges. So, we're not asking, as you'll see, for most of the representatives of the groups here, we're not asking you to absorb the full service charges, but we need to get a little bit closer and pull that, I mean, it's gone up since 2010, right? It's gone up. We need to get a little bit closer, and we need to not burden the taxpayers, but we also want to keep your activities going. So, we're trying to find a balance, and you'll see that as we go through. I had much higher hopes when we started, and they've come way down. So, you'll see that. So, the service charges clearly are defined as the combined cost of the custodial employee rate and benefits, and the cost for the utilities, electricity, the water, the sewer, any supplies or cleaning costs per one-hour block of time. Each organization will be responsible for paying both the rental fee and service charges for every use of facility as classified in one of those four groups or five, as Dr. Roach explained. If a rental and facility usage for a single event exceeds the capacity of a single custodial employee, additional service charges would apply or may apply, and may be added in to cover the cost of that second person, which makes sense, right? So, okay, so moving on to the next piece of this then. The rental fees and service charges. Thinking that you know, representing your groups, where you fall in line with those different classifications. 1A, no rental fees, no service charges, except, as we mentioned, fundraisers for out-of-district contributions. So, if everything's going to be going out, we've asked them to absorb just half of the service charge, not the full service charge and no rental fee. 1B, no rental fees and no weekday service charges, but service charges on the weekends would apply. So, with each classification, you see that there's a slight adjustment. Class 2, no rental fees, but service charges on weekdays and weekend usage. And again, those service charges are adjusted, correct? Is that where we have the, for 2? That's where we have the hometown discount, yes, on the weekdays. You'll see that we've brought those numbers way down. Class 3, rental fees and service charges based upon the rental fee and service charge schedule, and that's for Class 4 also. Okay? So, the closer you are to Spring Ford, that's going to dictate what your service charges and your rental fees are. Okay. All right, so, the rental fees schedule comparison, the current fee versus the new fee. Are we taking a look at this? Current, Class 1B, current policy, Class 1B, new policy. Class 2, current policy and Class 2, new policy. There's no figure on there. No figure. Okay? But, when we go over to the, that's rental fees, right? Rental fees, 1A, 1B, and 2. 3 and 4, we know rental fees apply. Service charges, which include the labor, wages, taxers, peasers, for one employee equivalency, electricity usage, water, sewage, trash, consumables, cleaning supplies, line painting on the outside, if applicable, does not include equipment, facility depreciation fees. Remember, I said a little while ago, that's more wrapped into the rental, right? But the service charges are the specific things that you can quantify. Okay? So, that's what those are, and here's what they look like. Do you want to go over those at that point? Okay.
So, we tried to do a similar comparison to the previous screen. So, on the left, what's, left side, kind of looks like a light blue. Class 1B, weekend current policy and Class 1B, weekend new policies. You can see the rate difference. It says 0 or 50 because based upon the previous MOU, but for no service charge pieces, if they did have to pay, it would be 50, the rate was $50 an hour for the service, for the service charge, and the new policy for 1B on the weekends is 55, 65, 60, or 65 based upon the facility on your left, the K to 4 facility being a little less than the 5, 6, 7, 5, 6, 7 equaling 10 to 12 because of the sheer size, and the cleaning piece 8, 9, kind of in the middle there. That's the comparison to current policy and new policy. We felt this is the information, people want to see the difference in terms of the rates. Although the board, you have a copy of the policy as well. In the middle there, that goes to Class 2. There's your weekday, current policy, nothing, zeros all the way through, and so there's a change there with weekday, new policy, 14, 16, 15, 16 rates there. So, that's during the week, hourly rate for use of the service charge tied to the rentals during the week in the buildings. There's your difference from the previous. And then going all the way out to the far right with the Class 2, weekend current policy, all 50 down, and Class 2, weekend, new policy, there are newer rates, 75, 85, 80, 85, based upon the facility size and usage. So, we have the employee cost, which is consistent across all buildings, and then the size of the building because of the number of people that may be coming in and out is dictated by the change there, and the difference is dictated by the electricity usage and the consumption and the other items that Mrs. Zoski shared. So, that's the overall comparison. Knowing our audience tonight, we didn't prepare 3 and 4. We would share that with you to keep this on a tight timeline. Here's the overall service charge schedule. So, in a nutshell, on your left is all the facility sizes along the top, Class 1B, 2, 3, and 4. And that's, and it's in entirety what that chart looks like. 1A is not on there. 1B, weekday, no charge. Weekend, you can see the numbers going down. Class 2, weekend, which we just described, and Class 2, weekend, and then 3 and 4 all So, we put together a couple of examples here. So, here's two examples, so you can kind of see a comparison. So, hypothetically, here is a Class 1B rental that's going to use the 9th grade center for 10 hours on a Saturday, both the gym and the cafeteria. It's a fundraiser, and all the profits are going back to the organization for Spring Ford students. So, what would happen there? Current policy, the current and new policy, there's no rental fees as was described. The service charge on the weekend, excuse me, is 50, so over 10 hours, it's 500, and then on the right, it's 55, and then over 10 hours is 550. You see the numbers, 1 of 4 or 1 of 1. So, if this happened to be one of the free ones, where there was no service charge applied, that would obviously knock that, the dollars down. But I want you to see the full piece there. And that's an assumption of there's only one employee that we need. Some events get so large, you need two employees, or you need to bring people in on a second shift, depending upon the number of hours. So, that may impact cleanup and the overall cost. We'll try to predict that when the contract comes through for the rental. There's one example. The second example is a hypothetical Class 2 group, which was going to use the three different gyms at three different schools for 10 weeks over the course of every day of the week, Monday through Sunday. So, there's a Monday through Friday at all three schools. It would be three and a half hours a day, and on Saturday and Sunday, eight hours a day. So, work with me horizontally there in terms of, school number one is a K to 4 school, so there's no rental fee as you move yourself across. The service charge on the weekend, in new policy, right in the middle, current policy is 0. With the new policy, there's $14 an hour for the service charge, and then on the weekend, you can see the adjustment from 50 to 75. And the second school, in the same organization, they're going to use the 5, 6, 7 center. So, again, you work yourself across, no fees, service charge is different hourly in the middle, and then you have a different hourly rate than folks are used to on the right side. And the third one will be the 9th grade center, 8th grade center, work yourself across, they're the same cost, and you can see the end numbers at the bottom in terms of the difference between current and new. So, the new charge there in the middle is there, but in the past, there was no weekday charge for the service. Now, with that small example of 10 weeks over the course of three schools and seven days a week, it's an additional charge of $7,875. And then you can see the difference in the charge in the bottom between $24,000 and $38,400 for just that same exact example. That's if you see the impact of the change on a small scale for some organizations, for some, that would be a significant increase in the amount of facility usage they use. So, we're at the final slide. That's what I thought was going to happen. So, there's four addendums that are attached inside the policy all the way at the end. So, when you open the policy, it now says page 10 of 10, but there's actually five more pages. The first one is the information about certificate of insurance, the second is the hold harmless clause, the third is the actual facility rental fee and service charge schedule. That would be an item that we would plan on revisiting through finance each year to see if we had to adopt. So, it wouldn't necessarily be a policy change, it would be an addendum change, but still would get approved each year as a part of that based upon the finances. And then finally, the last piece is the application for the use of school facilities. So, this is the recommendation. After three years coming out of the committee, with many people having feedback and sharing, and it's on the agenda for first reading, for consideration.
So, I think I just want to reiterate a couple of things too. One is, just to point out, to highlight for you, it used to be that there were four, as Dr. Roach mentioned, that there were, that there were four freebies, so to speak, free events that an organization could have. The committee did, we did make the recommendation to take that to one. One of the reasons for that is some of the tracking was questionable as to who was having the different ones and what was really taking place. So, we want to do a better job of tracking it going forward, and everything in this policy, we also want it to make enforceable. It makes no sense to have it if we're not going to be able to enforce the policy. So, that was very important for us during this process. Miss Tanyi shaking her head, she was a large part of this process too, so, while she had been on this committee. So, that was a couple of things I wanted to highlight. Also, please remember, if you're using the facility for an extended period of time, we invite you to speak with Mr. Fink and find an amicable meeting ground so that you can accomplish your goals, and we can try to get a little closer to being whole than we are now. Okay? But I did want to outline that for some of you, and do any of the board members have any questions at all or comments? Dr. Dressler?
If I went to the Methacton School District, would I be seeing comparable numbers for these same facility charges?
You would be seeing some, like, that was one of the districts that we pulled the information from. I believe that it was, it was Upper Perk that had, I believe that it was Upper Perk, when I think back, that had the policy that we most dug, like, we dug into that. It just had a lot of meat to it, and it had a similar classification system from what I recall. So, it provided a framework for us, as well as the others. So, as I said, we looked at a number of school districts and outside organizations to pull in those numbers to make them comparable on the rental fee side. But the service charges were generated from within with what the costs are to run the building at that time. It was said over and over to us that if that activity wasn't taking place, what would the cost to the district be? And that's something we struggled with in the committee for a long time. Anybody else?
Colleen, I just had a question.
Yes.
Number 6, that all activities have to end at 10:30 on weekends, that doesn't interfere with SNAP, does it?
No, no.
Just making sure.
You're talking about the overnight?
Yeah, yeah.
No.
Okay.
But thank you for asking. Anybody else? Is Mr. Denard on the...
Yeah, I have a...
Okay.
Yes, a couple of things.
Okay.
One, we could debate service charges, whether they're right or wrong, whether it should be higher or lower. But I think one of the things that's not exactly correct is that during the weeknights, for the most part, all the facilities have a custodian there or multiple custodians. So, charging for custodians, particularly when there's multiple events going on in a building that could be charged a facility, charged for a custodian, would be double dipping or triple dipping or quadruple dipping, and in most cases, that custodian would be there anyway. Just the second thing is that we need to really work with these groups to see what the real financial impact to them is, because in some of these cases, it could make it so they can't hold events because they can't come up with the money for these fees, and instead, they're providing benefit to our students, the gym activities that the district doesn't have to spend money on, that these groups do it on a volunteer basis, and now they have the extra issue of trying to raise the money and make, and pay bills, and when they did have to do that before, it could really impact whether or not they can have that activity anymore. The third thing is, what impact would this have on the 1920 budget? Does this mean we're going to see a reduction in the tax increase because we're implementing these charges? Or is it not going to be material? If it's not material, why are we charging it? And then lastly, the thing that I've heard the most about since I've been on the board for almost 12 years now, is this locked door policy for having somebody, having let people in for practices and games, which I don't see in any district. I've been doing travel basketball for 14 years. I have not seen one other district lock the doors. And I don't really think that locking doors, the way we are doing it now, as opposed to what we did in the past, adds any additional security and makes our facilities any safer, particularly since there are events that the district holds where there's not somebody monitoring the door, like the school board meeting tonight. There's nobody monitoring the door, anybody can walk in and go anywhere they want. So, those are the concerns that I have with adding fees and this locked door policy.
Okay, so, Mark, can you hear me? As I'm going to respond to those, is that okay? Can you hear me there?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, good. Okay, so, many of these four questions that you had here, or four issues that you brought up, were brought up repeatedly during our committee meetings. So, the first one I'll tackle is about the custodians, and I, there's a couple of schools of thought on that. Again, as I said earlier, many of these buildings, as we have been told prior to Mr. Hunter being here and when Mr. Cooper was here, the buildings would not necessarily be open and in use during those times that the events are taking place, number one. Number two, the custodians could be shuffled around to cut down on the hours that we are paying for them to be here. They also have other... They also have other responsibilities to do during the time that they're here, which does not include monitoring doors or trash or cleaning bathrooms or anything of that sort after an event. And the last note that I'll make on the custodians is the rate is one-fourth, one-fourth of the actual charge. We have, we have brought it all the way down to one-fourth to, uh, for class two, to make it more palatable. So we recognize that this can have a, an impact on the activities. And we don't, and this is your second point, we don't want the organizations to fall apart and not be able to offer the activities and the events and the, and the, the fun stuff and the, the social stuff and the growing stuff that you do. But we have to balance that with responsibility. And that's what we're trying to do here. The impact on the budget, I'll refer to Mr. Fink when we actually see this go into play. And, um, your last piece on having the doors locked, again, as Dr. Roach said, that's been in the policy. We reiterated and put in there, emphasized that we don't want the doors propped and that we do want the hallways monitored during the activity. We say that as an extra layer of protection in the times that we live in. That, that's basically what that is. Do you want to add further to that?
Just to add, to add back to the, uh, the financial piece. The challenge here, and we talked about it on the committee, is this is an à la carte menu, potentially for a buffet type of experience, which is why they keep, keep going back to meeting with Mr. Fink. I'm not sure if people don't want to meet with Mr. Fink, or it's, uh, it's just simply to, to, too, too much to, uh, to work through that. But the challenge here is someone looks at this, it, it is like that à la carte type of thing. I want this day, this day. And when you get multiple, uh, requests, that's when they have, we've added that piece in there about the, having the conversation to, to, to build that bridge and, uh, and hopefully find a win-win in terms of the finances as well as the, the organization, uh, being successful.
And, and there would be no double dipping, triple dipping, quadruple dipping. There would be none of that because that's going to be over, overseen and monitored by Mr. Fink in that office. So we're going to do a better job of tracking. That's not going to happen. If, if there is, if there are two events taking place in the same evening and you, you bring it to the attention of the finance officer, they, they recognize that, then, you know, we'll share some of the expenses. We're not about trying to, um, charge people unnecessarily here. We're just trying to get closer to being whole. Okay. Anything else? Anybody else?
So, um, I don't necessarily agree with, uh, the changing the, what'd you call it, MOU from four to one. One of the main reasons I don't agree with it is because I was on this board when we went from one to four. And the reason we did that, I don't know, that really, you know, attributed to maybe two or three, uh, school-related organizations only. So I'm not really sure what that's being applied to today. But there were specific organizations that that applied to, uh, and the reason, that's the reason why we, we were, we put that in place. So I, I won't agree to reducing it from four to one, um, because I worked hard to go from one to four. And there were, and there were, like I said, there were specific reasons for that. I, you know, this meeting opened up, you know, from an organization talking about how they're going to be impacted, uh, severely, uh, through their season. What the public needs to understand is that the same organization utilizes our facilities starting in October and going all the way through the beginning of March. Uh, and they're using pretty much every building. What I believe that the board has said before was that there can be a way to work together with that organization because they are providing a, a great service to our community and our children within the community. But that doesn't mean that we could be in a position where these buildings could be continued to use, be used the way they are, uh, without being, uh, a fee being associated to it. And I believe that, that organization would be in a different category. And that category would be the one where they need to sit down with the business office and work together to find, uh, something, uh, where it would make sense for both the district and, and this organization. Because no one wants to see, uh, a burden put onto that organization. But on the flip side, that organization does put a burden, a burden onto the school system, making sure that the facilities are kept clean after the, the, the high use every evening or most evenings, uh, including Saturday and Sunday. So I think that, uh, we are in a position to hear what you guys are saying. I'm sure that we could get to some number that would make sense for both the district and, and the organization. And I know, you know, Mr. Fink would work very close with you guys to ensure that the takeaway is that, yes, there's going to be some increase on your end, but we're not saying that you would adhere to the hourly rate, uh, based on the examples that were put forth, uh, by Dr. Roach, uh, earlier. So I, I, I look forward to seeing the outcome of that. But I think at the end, it will be palatable for everyone involved. I think that there's some, I'm curious, organizations like the Legion, who has an agreement with the school district, I don't see where that's covered within this agreement or, or within this, uh, policy.
My understanding of the last time that I read the agreement, it actually said that the, uh, that the, uh, the Legion would follow along with the policy, seven oh seven. So it has, it has to be either grandfathered in or they follow along with the updated policy. It didn't have specifics that there's no fees or there's, there's this fee or that fee. It said it would fall in line with the policy.
Right, but I think that that was in the case that the Legion does majority of their own maintenance and a lot of things are involved, uh, so I don't think-
Will that be the same as working directly with Mr. Fink on those same conversation? Or do you think it has to be a-
I think that the, I think, I think the organizations that have specific agreements with the district already because an organization like the Legion has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on building the facility that now we're going to charge them to use based on this policy. And there's other organizations that are like that as well. So I think that there's further conversation that has to occur there as well. Without that, you wouldn't have that facility. Or the district would have spent millions building it. I, I, probably the Legion, if you went back and looked, the amount of money that was invested in that facility is probably close to, I could be wrong, but probably close to a million dollars. So I don't think you could go to an organization like that and say, okay, now we're going to charge you to use the facility that you built and that you maintain and clean up. So just something to think about.
I hear what you're saying about that, and that was something that we did touch on during some of the policy meetings, was about Legion and I thought it was maybe football, too. It was another one.
Yeah, youth football.
The, the youth football, because there are two clauses, there are two agreements that were, um, additional documents that were provided that we took a look at. And so here, here's the question. When in that paper, when in those supporting documents or those documents that we review, it, it says that, you know, because they're older, the agreements are older, and it says that they are willing to follow along suit with what the school district imposes or puts into place, implements. We say, no, still will grant you, even though you're saying you're going to go along and you sign that that way, we're still going to grant you special circumstance?
All I'm saying is that when you have an agreement with an organization that spends hundreds of thousands of dollars
I hear you, I hear, right, yep.
To make it a facility, you can't go back and charge them based on this to use the facility-
Then we really don't want to refer to that agreement because in-
Well, let, let me, let me interject. Because we do, especially with, the Legion's a perfect example. We have, uh, we've had a number of licensing agreements over the years. Most recently, about two or three years ago, it does spell out our relationship. I would like to look at that in terms of how that comports with this. And there are certainly implications where you materially change the expectations of the party under contract. So I would like to take a look at it, and that's certainly something that we might need to specifically address with the Legion under those circumstances. That, that is a unique relationship. We have that with a couple of organizations based on, uh, utilization of certain facilities.
Well, yeah, and it, and it was under the understanding that those organizations were investing tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars into the facility.
So we want to, A, make sure that whatever we do here comports with that and vice versa. So that, that is something that, over the course of this review, we'd have to just take a look at.
Right.
That's fine, too. And can you just provide us with what those reasons were that you went from one to four? And I'll take that back to committee, um, or two. Yes, Mr. Denard's on the line here. Mrs. Sputzer's not here, but I, I can take that back to committee and share with them why we should consider doing the four as opposed to the one.
Yeah, it was, it was just basically the, the, the two organizations that I know that we did this and what we're thinking of, uh, one of them is here this evening. And one is, I don't see any representation here, but they're here. And the, the sole purpose is, is that their working, a hundred and twenty percent of their efforts is going to raising money that goes directly back to the students of the school. And when we looked at this, we said, why are we charging an organization that is solely volunteer to raise money for the students to be able to utilize that money to go on, on trips or, uh, buy instruments or different things? You know, how, why would we, why would we be charging? In fact, there was, this all stemmed from, I mean, going back as far as my first year on the board when SNAP had their event. And, um, we charged them, the board then, um, well, the previous board, I shall say, because it was already underway when, when, uh, as far as what the expectation was. And it was going to be somewhere around eighteen hundred dollars, uh, for, uh, for them to host the SNAP post-prom, prom event. And then Marc Herda, who was the previous superintendent, actually took part of her, uh, raise that year and donated the money back to the school district, uh, to pay for, for that money, for those fees. And then it was the following year, uh, because we got sworn in December and then that prom was coming up in, in April or May, the following year. And again, when the board was confronted with charging SNAP, at that point, I don't remember. I'll just say two thousand dollars for easy, you know? And as a board, we sat there and said, you know, we're not, this is not acceptable that we're not going to sit here and charge an organization like SNAP who is here providing an event for our students so they have a safe environment for after prom, to charge them two thousand dollars. And then we, we waived that fee that year as the board, that then board, uh, back in two thousand and, I'll say, ten. And then we start looking at tho- those specific events that these organizations are providing in the district. And we, and we, and we said, how many events are they doing? And that's how we came up with the number four. And we felt that it was a reasonable number based on what their schedule was of fundraising for the year. And again, we, as a board, did not believe that we should be charging these organizations that are solely here for the students to provide a better environment for the students for what they're providing, or what they're, um, and I guess it was, it was then at the, the third organization, because we were doing it for the music association, I guess it was, there was the booster organization as well as far as, uh, the couple of events that they were doing, uh, throughout the year. And that's why we came up with, uh, with the four. Because, uh, again, looking at what SNAP did, um, they did, they had the, the post-prom event. They had a major fundraiser, which, um, was, one of the fundraisers was Dancing With The Stars. And, uh, of course, Springford Dads had the ultimate performance of all time, but anyway, I won't go there. But, uh, and then he did like, um, they did the fundraiser, they did the post-event, they did, uh, the, the prom dress event. And then there was a one other event that they, uh, that they did. And that's how we came up with the, an actual four. And then we worked, talked with the music association as well. And we looked at the major events that they were doing throughout the year, uh, of raising money. And again, all the money that is raised for, is, is put back to the students to help offset the cost for a lot of the trips that they go on. You know, when they go to Disney or, or wherever it may be, they're, they're helping offset those costs and putting that money back towards the students. So that's why the board, that was the, the board's thinking, to have us, they're raising this money for our students. We're not going to take five hundred to a thousand dollars, which is a lot of money to an organization, and taking that away from the students.
Mr. DeBel, I'm looking over Mrs. Fern's shoulder here. The MOU, uh, seven oh seven C actually is for presidents of parent-teacher association, home and school associations, home, so, uh, home and school association leagues, athletic booster, music association, and Ed Foundation. So now that SNAP has moved out from Ed Foundation, we've got to get that updated as well.
Right, well, because the Ed Foundation was put in was because SNAP at the time fell underneath the Ed Foundation.
Now that, now that they've moved out to-
Right, now they're out on their own.
So we've got to, regardless of what happens, we want to update that.
But is that the old policy or new policy?
That's the current policy, which is on there, so.
Okay, so I don't remember-
We're not going to charge them, but just, just let you know-
Let's back charge them.
Just to update it, just to get that updated.
I don't remember, again, I don't, I, I remember the three specific cases. And it was, really, it started off as two, and then we include a booster, uh, the booster, and it was, uh-
The way it's written now, it includes all the, almost everyone in that, uh, two B category. So, that's fine, just want to let you know.
See, the follow-up with Tom said, the, also the home and school PTO organizations actually pay for assemblies that are conducted during the school day.
Can, can you repeat that? I missed that.
Yeah, the, uh, PTOs and home and schools actually fund assemblies that are conducted during the school day. So even, even some of the things they pay for are things that the students get during the school day itself.
Yeah, that's, that's okay.
One, I have one other thing, too. I think that, I would like to see Doctor, or not, Mr. Fink, I didn't elevate up the Doctor, Mr. Fink, prepare a comparison or about analysis of the expected fees be collected and the projected cost for, uh, all these activities to be charged fees. So we can see what, how much money is being raised, how much expenses are being offset to see what the, the numbers are, to see if we're talking about a lot of money or a little money or really what it is. And then what would happen if, to, to the budget, if none of these activities occurred going forward? Would, would that impact the budget at all?
I hear what you're saying. I, I do, Mr. Denard. However, we have, we, we've discussed that, we've gone through that during committee meetings, and it is the-
We have new numbers now.
Okay, but I, I hear what you're saying, and I don't, I think that the committee members-
What we're really talking about in dollars? Are we talking to a little money, a lot of money? What's really on the table here? That means the board needs to have that, so help evaluate the, what the value of the fees are, if it's really generating money to offset the fees or if it's really significant.
Right, and we're going to see that-
A million dollar budget, what kind of money are we really talking about here?
Right, we're going to see that over the course of the next year. We're going to see what the impact is. We're going to see that impact, Mr. Denard, over the course of the next year. We'll be tracking that and looking to see. And that's one of the reasons that these fee schedules are in an addendum, as Dr. Roach referenced earlier, that should we need to revisit that because of many years going by? We, it would be more feasible, easier to do that in the addendum than it would to revamp the whole policy. So we have looked at the examples that, you're, you're welcome to go and, and figure that out. But the examples that Dr. Roach and I have shown, um, do calculate for the groups. They know where they fall. It, they do, you, it's, it's, it's doable to figure that out, what the impact is. And again, if you're using the facilities over a long extended period of time, we invite you to please reach out to Mr. Fink and find an amicable agreement. It may or may not be far off from where we are here. But yes, I think we can, to your question, I think we can ask Mr. Fink, uh, it, after this goes into play, to track it and show us what that impact is. Regardless of whether it's a small impact or a large impact, the committee has recommended, whether it's a little amount of money or a large amount of money, the committee has recommended that this goes before the board. So as a whole board, this is up for a first reading to all of you, myself and Ted.
So in the end, are we asking Mr. Fink to make, uh-
What I'm saying is that if we're, look, asking the board to evaluate whether we should implement fees into the policy for these, uh, activities, I think it's good to, for the board to see what the impact is in total to the district. And we're talking about money, and we make decisions based on numbers, well, for other things. Why don't we do it here, too? I'd like to see what those numbers are. So that, and the rest of the board, I think, should really see what they are as opposed to- to, to approving a policy with, we really don't know how much money we're talking about.
The numbers are in the schedules. Dr. Dressler?
It sounds to me like we're asking Mr. Fink to make some value judgments on what each of these activities should be charged based on some judgment that he makes, which doesn't seem like a fair thing for us to place on Mr. Fink.
Are you referencing for the long-term capacity?
Yeah, for negotiating maybe lower fees and-
The long, how do we, the long-term capacity is because it would be used for an extended period of time, obviously, that there would be maybe some give and take or some breaks that Mr. Fink could possibly find in the, the scheduling or be able to do it that way to help it be more affordable to the organizations that are using it for a long time. We're not asking him to make subjective calls, but he is in a position that he can tweak numbers a little bit more and try to assist with that process to make it more palatable.
Part of the challenges, I said, is this is an à la carte menu for some people that want to have a lot more than that, so it gets expensive quick based upon that conversation. Because the way, all of those groups that we saw are pretty much set up the same way, that if you want to rent something, you can kind of map it out and say, okay, I'm in this group, it costs this much, this is how much we have to set aside for that, whether, whatever category. So it's not designed, just by the nature of all use of facility policies, designed to, to take into account the more frequent use or if there's flexibility on the weekday piece versus flexibility on the weekend. I mean, the weekend costs that are there are what we're being told from the experts that shared, those are the true costs that are there. So opening up and reducing those at all on the weekend, we're already hemorrhaging money in terms of not covering the costs that are associated with that.
Of course, one could make the argument that all these activities enhance the educational process of the school and should be absorbed as part of the educational expenses that we incur. I mean, one can make that argument. So we might want to think about that.
I think we need to be careful with-
That is my argument.
I think we need to be careful with the, the public rate, public rates. If that is the rate, that needs to be the rate. We shouldn't look at having a sliding scale based on a conversation with Mr. Fink. That could get very dicey with the various organizations. So if it's $50 an hour, it needs to be $50 an hour, not fif, you know, not $45 for organization one and $38.50 for another organization. Needs to be whatever the hourly rate that is published, that's what we need to follow. I think that, I agree with Clinton in a way, but on the flip side, we also have to look at, you know, and I, I, I believe that you guys had a, or somewhere along the line, there was a projected cost, or not, or projected, not cost, but projected increase in what would, the district would see based on the, the known usage of the facilities now. I thought, I thought I remember seeing something, some numbers that were, say, if we make these changes, it would-
That was, that was way back when we had our-
Okay, so we, we should have, we should have some idea of what increases we would, we would see or we, we would realize if we put these rates in place. I agree with Mark that we should have a general idea what the impact is. It's not going to change, what everyone needs to understand, I think you said this right in the beginning, or this was said right at the beginning of, when we were doing this, this isn't going to drastically change the district, it's not going to drastically change the budget, it's not going to drastically change. All, what it's going to do is that we were charging fees previously, or the, the district was charging fees previously, and it's has been, it's time now to look at those fees and, and increase those because everything's gone up, you know?
Well, the fees were very ambiguous, previously. And we've gone to a point where they're no longer ambiguous.
And really based on no realistic anything.
Correct. We have now a service charge and a rental fee. And there's clear understanding and rationale as to where each of those figures came from. And I think that having been on this committee for two of the three years that they worked on it, I can say clearly that, you know, we are, this committee worked through those numbers to get to a point where there's a high confidence level that the numbers presented are realistic. I agree with Clinton to a point of the numbers should be the numbers, but again, when you're looking at organizations that use the facility for long periods of time, we don't want to overcharge them to the point of putting them out of business. That's not what we want to do either, speaking to Ed's point of there is value added to all of these organizations. And I think that, again, if you look at these numbers, even from when you gentlemen were probably at our meeting last May, these numbers have declined very significantly from where we were. So I, I think that a lot of that needs to come into play. This is, this is not something that was built in a box, this is not something that was done overnight. This has been a three-year endeavor, and it is time to move it forward. I do agree with you on one thing for sure, Tom, and that is the going from four to one seems rather drastic, and understanding the process, hopefully that'll be relooked at a little bit. But other than that, I, I, I do think that those that are using the long-term facility should seek out information from Mr. Fink to come to an agreement. I don't think those numbers would be arbitrary per se, but I think that they would fall more in line with where we're at, what they're paying now, along with then some potential increases to fit in line with, you know, where we want them to be. This is not in any way, shape, or form to make us whole, this is not in any way, shape, or form to add numbers significantly to the budget, again, as Tom said, and as was said in the beginning of this presentation. But three years in the making, we're at a point where these numbers are, are much more reasonable than I've seen through that timeframe. And, and I can honestly say that, you know, based on even the increases on the examples that you gave, you know, it's, it may not look palatable, but if you look at the bigger picture of, the other side of it is, we are here, and there's nine of us here, and we are here to educate our children first. And we are here for the use of facilities as a secondary.
I'm not looking to put anybody out of business. However, you have to look at this from a business perspective. If you're going to publish a price, you have to stay with that price. Otherwise, you need to put a clarification in there stating if you use the facility over six months, this is the hourly rate. So then everybody knows going into it. But to have an hourly rate of $50, and as I mentioned earlier, and one organization gets charged $45, the next organization is charged $40, we're going to go down a rabbit hole we don't want to go down. So if that is the rate, it needs to be the rate. If you want to put it on a sliding scale, then that needs to be put on the document also. So everybody knows above board what the numbers are based on usage. Or if that's not the case, it's $50 an hour for everybody.
That's the rabbit hole we're already in. If you can look at where it says class three, I'm not sure if behind you, this way, right there. These are the real numbers that were given from Mr. Fink and the, and the team there. Those are the costs, the service charge costs, that are a little different during the weekday based upon the weekend for overtime and other, other time associated with that. So those are the same costs here, the same costs here, and the same cost in class two for weekend usage. That's exactly, that's exactly what you're talking about. When you go into the weekday costs, that's the cost, the 56, 66, that's the exact same cost. And as Mrs. Zowsky shared, the, the price for class two is a quarter of that, and the reduction from class two weekend down to class one B is $20 off in terms of, because of the, the nature of the organization, how the money funnels right back to the district and to support the programs for that, beyond whether it's one or four or however many associated with it, that's, that's the difference. So we're already in this rabbit hole. This is the way, the, all, all these types of use of facility policies that were listed up there all have categories based upon how close you are to the overall school, the 1A group, then your boosters, then your community groups, and as you move out further, that's why the, the, the class two groups are, they have more than 50% of the people come from Springford. They're in, they live in the community, and they're non-for-profit, and then the next group is outside. So going with that one size fits all, you potentially have people that are on the outside of the organization, using, using, outside of the community, using the facility.
No, 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 that's not what he's saying. What he, what, what we, two things. One is, is that we have, this is, if this is the scale that we're going to utilize, then that's the scale for everyone. But that's what Clinton is saying. But because what we're, what we've been saying is that if an organization uses a facility for five or six months and they're using, you know, extended period of time, that organization should be, could sit and, and talk with Mr. Fink about coming up with what, what would leave, a, a, a number that both would be comfortable with. And I think, I think we, I, I still think we need to do that, but I think for us to be successful at doing that and not putting the burden solely on Mr. Fink, we as a board need to establish guidelines that Mr. Fink would need to follow as far as what he can basically, I don't want to say negotiate, work through with an organization. Because it's not a negotiation, it's, it's, again, it's, it's understanding the total cost, the total impact to the district. And, you know, Dr. Dressler, I agree with what you're saying, but when, I think, again, when we, when we originally started this, the hundreds of thousands of dollars or more that the districts are already putting out to cover these organizations utilizing our facilities, all we're talking about doing is offsetting some of those costs a bit and bringing those costs in alignment with today as far as having better clarification on what those rates are, how we establish those rates, and make sure that some of those rates are in alignment with what our hourly costs could be or are with, with district employees. So I don't believe we're quite ready for first reading, because I'm going to bring this to a close. I think that there's some things that have to still get hammered out. I think we're close. But the takeaway from this evening is, one, is we need to go back and relook at the MOU going from four to one. We also have to establish some guidelines for the business, business operations to work within. And I believe that we need to also have a general idea without being, we, we could put a, a, you know, factor on a plus or minus 20% of accuracy as far as what we would anticipate seeing in revenue associated to these, to these new fees. I think there are three big things that came out this evening. I think we're close to having a first reading, but I don't think we're quite ready for first reading this month. I think there's a couple, these couple of things we need to just hammer out a bit, and I think that within, possibly next month, we could be closer or having a first reading of the policy. So-
I, I do want to say, I agree with you to a point with the fees for business office, but that is not anything that is changed from the previous or the current policy to this policy. So in the current policy, it's the Y and summer camps that are listed under fees for the business office. So it was three and four, the long-term facility and the PIA that were added to that piece. So this isn't anything that's not being done today by the business office, or that hasn't been done by the business office for years. So I just wanted to at least make that point because, you know, again, to throw this back to committee for that reasoning, I, I don't know that that's the best place for it when the business office is the one that's dealing with the numbers piece and they're dealing with that in today's environment.
My thought is on the, with Mr. Fink too. In terms of, of that piece, I completely agree with Mrs. Seany because we, we've been, and we've struggled with this in the committee for a long time. And it's not a blanket, okay, Mr. Fink, you can do whatever you want to make them happy, just make everybody happy. It wasn't, that wasn't really what that was about. It was more in taking a look at the details and if we didn't need an extra custodian or you're following really closely and you know what, the electric use was down a little bit, or something like that, trying to just work some of that in. And I'm not sure, I, I can go back to committee and I, I understand about the four, going from the four to the one and the one to the four, although there wasn't specific information in the existing policy to explain that, I can take that back to committee now. I can take back the Legion information to Mr. Fitzgerald about that. I can take back getting a general idea of what the full impact will be, more or less with the, with the 20% guidelines are. But the guidelines for the business operations, what is it specifically you want from policy on that piece? Because I, I don't know where else we can go with that in policy. Yes, Mr. Jackson, yes?
My statement is simply this. The published rate has to be that rate. It, it keeps it simple, you know? I'm a numbers guy. It's very simple. It's, you know, it's four hours times 50, that's $200 for everybody. No fluctuation based on air conditioning use, usage or electrical usage or plumbing, plumbing usage. We stay with, if it comes that, goes that route, you go at that rate. It's safe, it's clean.
I, I agree, I agree with you that it is. So, but you're, but my concern was I don't want to handicap an organization that's using the facility for an extended period of time and giving back to our community, not trying to, we're not trying to, to handicap them or paralyze them or impact them so greatly that they can't function a, as a group. That's not our effort. And that's why, if you look at the numbers today compared to the numbers last May, they've been slashed greatly, slashed. They're almost, and, and, and some would argue this, but in some ways, some of the numbers are close to what's already in policy. But there are many parts of that policy that are not being enforced.
That, that's, that's the issue. The issue, one of the issues is that there's many parts of the current policy that wasn't or isn't being enforced equally across the board.
True.
Which has to be addressed. And so, again, I think maybe what we need to look at as a board, so we truly understand the total impact on an organization like the one we're referring to, then work it out. Say, for four months, if they use the facilities, this is what their cost is going to be. Total cost, all in. And that should be, you don't have to put the organization up, you could just say organization A. If they use the facilities, continue to use the facilities the way they are, this is what the cost will be.
You want that written in an addendum?
No.
Or in-
Has, has anybody sat down and actually figured out that number?
No, we've done, we've done examples, different ways to-
No, that's not what I'm asking.
Not the full number, no.
Right, so there's an organization that we're referring to that what every, the board needs to understand, because we're talking about the, the potential impact that that will have, and it's like, if we charge that organization all in based on the current, on the proposed new policy for the period of time that they use the facilities, what will that total number be? That shouldn't be that hard to figure out.
No, but do you want that number for every organization? What are you looking for? Do you want that for every-
Okay, I'll say it one more time. Take that organization that uses the facilities for four, for that period of time, and figure out using the proposed policy, what will be the total cost all in to that organization? You don't have to list what the organization is, but organization A, okay? Or organization Smith, I don't care what you call it, just don't call it Fink, okay? And let's, and, and you could, we could take five minutes next week at the board meeting and, and present that number. And also, we should be able to have by next week a general idea of what the increased numbers would produce in additional monies to the district.
Okay, so we're meeting tomorrow night, policy, to flush out some of this and the recommendations from the board tonight. I definitely will address the four to one, one going- going back up to the four. We'll get the Legion paperwork over to Mr. Fitzgerald. And I will talk with Mr. Fink, requesting a general idea of the full impact, and also for that one specific organization or two. And if you want anything further for next week or going forward regarding guidelines for business operations, I would need further clarification.
Well, I think once we see what that total impact number is, and then we could talk to Mr. Fink next week to say, how do we come up with a number for the two organizations that are currently in the policy, in the current policy, not the proposed policy? And how do we come up with that number and see if there's some rationale other than that's the way we've always done it, we just give them a number? And then we could see if there's something that would, that we're doing there that would apply to other organizations that utilize the facility for four to six months.
Okay.
I'm sure we could come up with something that will satisfy what Mr. Jackson is bringing up.
Mm-hmm.
Because I, I kind of, I agree most of what you're saying, but I don't, I still think that we have to do something for a long-term usage. But there has to be rationale or, or something in place.
That's fine. I think we can agree to that and we'll push it further.
Let me just, Colleen.
Okay. Can I just add this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I was just going to add, because you guys were going multiple, multiple places. With regard to the long-term usage provision, I, from a general proposition, I agree we should be relying on the schedules.
Right.
Because it's objective, it's clear. It doesn't put Mr. Fink or the organization into, into that subjective mindset. So if, if, if we need to deviate from the schedules, we should create an objective criteria that he's adhering to consistently. Well, yeah, and easier said than done, obviously, because that's how we deal with that will be, will be a complication. But nevertheless, that should either be built, built into the policy in that subsection, or in the front end of the policy, it talks about how we are developing out administrative regulations to implement the policy, which I'm not so sure we've, we've begun to develop those in conjunction with this. But it's going to be in one of those two areas that we should be relying on that language.
Colleen, you've done, you know, a great job with this. I appreciate your leadership on this. And I appreciate the next product that you're going to present to us.
Thank you, Clinton, and thank you for your feedback. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, as they're coming back to their seats, we're going to roll through committee reports, curriculum, technology.
Thank you. The Curriculum and Technology Committee met on Tuesday, March 5th, in the District Office Conference Room. We started off the meeting with good news, and that was that on behalf of Dr. Julie Wolfman, the President of Widener University, we congratulated Lillian Efsu, who has been selected to receive a Widener University High School Leadership Award. As the recipient, Lillian will receive a $20,000 scholarship to Widener over four years and will be named an APOGI Scholarship Scholar should she enroll at Widener. This is a program that we have been able to recognize several students over the years. And I believe that unfortunately, we haven't had any takers on this, but from what I understand, Lillian is looking at Widener. So congratulations to her. We moved on to the curriculum side of the meeting. And first, we had a presentation from the Technology and Engineering Department where Ms. Reinweig shared information about the various classes in each grade, including those that are required and those that are elected, electives, rather, excuse me. Mrs. Bass then requested approval from the committee to add the purchase of new health and PE materials to the agenda for approval, which the committee approved the request. And you'll see that is on the agenda for next week for approval. Mrs. Rockland then provided a presentation on the status of the four through six resource. The presentation was included in the Friday board memo two weeks ago, along with provided detail. Mrs. Rockland led a team of teachers through the curriculum resource review process for K-4 math. This process encompassed the review of various programs, materials, trial of digital content, investigation of surrounding districts, and research into best practices and professional development. This has resulted in the decision to re-adopt our current resource, Everyday Math 4. A companion product, the digital learning system, ST Math, will also be adopted for all K-4 buildings to support the everyday mathematics and the student-focused learning and instruction. With Everyday Math 4, it is a high-quality product. It is research-based mathematics program that our teachers have grown to love over the years. In order to support the continued growth, not only in our teachers, but in our students as well, we've decided to focus not only on, not on the new product, but additional digital content and instructional practices in the classroom. The teachers are eager, eager to further their knowledge and small group instruction, and we are happy to support them with this growth and meaningful targeted professional development with the additional product. The approval of the new resource and digital content are on the agenda for approval. And everyone in the room agreed that we were all shocked and surprised that it ended up being Everyday Math 4 after this review process. However, I am 100% confident in the process that took place regarding that review. Mrs. Gardi then provided an ELA update, which included that literacy night is next week on March 26th. She also told us that the federal programming grant is reopened, pre-K program work is underway, and screening is taking place in May. And the pre-K readiness program will run from late June through July at Brook. We then moved to the technology side of the meeting, where Mr. Catalano discussed the modernized learning deployment for tech, next year, over 700 devices for this initiative. And that motion is on the agenda tonight for next week as well. Mr. Catalano then discussed the phone system update, which is still underway, but the field is narrowing, and more information will be coming on that shortly. Mr. Catalano also updated us on the Clever update, which is being tested at Oaks, and that is the single log-on via an individual SQR. And the testing is going very well, and the kids really love it. And that will be rolled out next year to all elementaries. It was discovered that there is not a telephone line in the Royers Ward elevator. Mr. Catalano and his team were asked to check all building and all elevators, and it was determined that Brook and Oaks also need these phone lines. So there will be the need for three elevator phone lines to be installed. And while that was removed as an action item for today, and that is because Mr. Catalano is looking for some alternative ways to have those phone lines installed. Mr. Catalano is also doing a piece for Rampage on, regarding student technology, so that kids are aware and understand what they can use, how to get on the internet, and things of that nature. Additionally, after the meeting, Mr. Catalano let me know that there was an RFP out to renew our dark fiber, which is how we connect all of our buildings and make them talk to one another. This is eligible for E-rate category one, so we get back over 40% of the cost. So we are going out to the lowest bid, which is also the current provider. So there's nothing that will change, except the price actually does go down a bit. And that contract is up for renewal for five years. And that is also on the agenda for approval. And our next meeting is April 2nd at 6:30. Any questions?
All right, let me show you a breeze through finance here. We met March 12th. We went through the monthly reports, reports, cash balances are expected in line with prior periods. Revenue detail is tracking. We're, we're looking, I think roughly, was it, Mr. Fink, 90% of revenues are in, I believe, was it about 90%? We're reviewing all expenditures. We're currently slightly on the budget with our expenditures, which is good. We looked at assessments. We're increasing assessments, slowed down slightly through the winter, but we're at, or Mr. Fink's goal is 4.5 billion. I think he's crazy, but he said, he didn't think I could work that in this evening. We're at $4,380,000 this, a year-to-date with our assessed value. We, we did break the 4 billion mark, was that November of last year? October of last year? So we are, we are, the assessed values are still continuing to increase, but they have slowed down slightly. We also looked at the earned income tax. Again, on pace and is, is basically as, as what we have budgeted. Self-funded insurance is currently performing well as budgeted as well. Food services, we are, continue to be in the black, but lunches are down about, about 1,800 from last year. And I'll get to, I'll give a little more detail about that coming up. And the high school expansion project, no additional change orders since the last report, which is great. We got into the budget update. As the board knows, we will be doing a budget presentation at the April work session. But right now, we're still looking at about $2.8 million gap in budget, which equates to about a 2.6% tax change. We're still seeing what areas we could look at as far as reducing that, that gap. There, the, the basic education, last year, if the board remembers, we didn't change the budget, our basic education funding from the state. Last year, we didn't change our budget amount, which was really from the year before. But then there was an increase of about $300,000 that came from the state last year that we didn't incorporate into the budget, because we weren't sure if, if any monies was going to go back to the state. But we did incorporate that $300,000 into this year's budget, if, if, if you could follow what I'm saying. There may be additional monies coming from the state this year, but because their budget cycle will be after ours, like always, we, we won't incorporate any additional monies from the state into this year's budget until we actually, until we can realize that money. We are looking at positions as far as for regular ed, special education, and other positions throughout the district. We will be holding exec session next Monday evening to talk about personnel-related items, because there's a few things within that portion of the budget that the board, we need to discuss, personnel-related. So watch for an email from Ms. Fern regarding exec session. Like I said, we will be presenting the budget at the April meetings. And hopefully, after the 30-day period, we'll be approving the budget in May. One of the things that I did talk to at the finance meeting was, what would be the impact with us reducing certain things within the budget? We do that every year when we, when we start to look at these budget gaps and say, what would, what would be the impact to the district if we cut certain things out of those changes in the budget? Not saying that we're going to do it, but the board does need to understand those impacts to the district as well. Food services update, looking at a couple of different options, hiring full-time or outsourced operations management. The R, the RFP went out mid-February. There were six companies that did come in for pre-meeting and visits to the schools. We're still waiting to see what will be responded to those RFPs. The bids are due by 10:00 a.m. on April 1st. That's kind of a crazy day to do that, April 1st. The goal does, is to have a solution in place in the July timeframe and being ready for the start of the new school year, no matter what that direction is. We will be making menu changes with the start of the school year as well. And hopefully, we'll be able to offset that 1,800 loss in food lunches and provide the students with more up-to-date food choices within the cafeteria. The meeting adjourned at 7:24. Any questions? Okay, right after that, we had our property committee meeting, the district office. Going through this real quick, we reviewed the high school expansion project, and everything still is on date and on budget, which is great to hear. And as I mentioned, through at finance, there were no changes to, change requests. We're, the overall project is at 63% complete through March 8. So again, we're on schedule for completion of, towards the end of, end of July. We did review the sewer feasibility information provided by Crabtree associated to Ram Stadium. And as we agreed to approve this evening, to spend up to $18,000 to, to get all the details in place, so to understand that project completely. And it will allow us to go to permitting and figure out what the next steps would be as far as getting contractors or subs in place to, to do that project. Water testing, the lead testing project, there's been a total of 702 outlets tested. I did see in the newspaper recently, there's a neighboring school district that has about a third of those outlets. So I think you guys did an impressive job seeing what other districts are, you know, when I said only had a third of what we have. There were a few that were just slightly, I guess you would say below or above the EPA, above the EPA standards, nothing to worry about. And they're being remediated, and there's no concerns, and retesting will occur this week. We discussed the proposed Limerick Elementary Playground for students with autism, looked at some conceptual designs. And the next steps are to evaluate existing playgrounds at remaining elementary schools that support students with autism with special education supervisor, and figure out what the facility or the playground should or will look like at Limerick Elementary. We did revisit the LED scoreboard at McValley Stadium. Next steps are to schedule an onsite demonstration. One of the, the companies we're looking at is going to bring down a unit so we could actually see it in, in, in use, and then kind of start making some decisions from there.
We, we have that scheduled for next Monday as well, the demonstration, before, before board meeting.
Oh, okay. They're going to bring it in here?
It's a trailer. They'll, they'll bring it onsite. We could have it out back here, wherever you want it.
Okay. All right, cool. Sorry, I didn't look up. I was just going through this. Oh, so one of the things that we also discussed was the facilities condition assessment. We talked about this at the previous meetings here at the board as well. And the whole goal of that is, is several years ago, we, the district, we put a 20-year capital projects plan in place, which was great to get us to where we are today. But as our buildings continue to age, and some of our equipment is aging, it makes sense for us to work with a company that specializes in doing these facilities assessments. Mr. Hunter's going to get more information and present at the next property meeting, so we could start making decisions on how we want to proceed forward. But as I said, at the property meeting, this is something that we, it's the next, I'll call it version two of our 20-year capital projects plan. This will really refine and get into more detail about all of our major assets within the, within the district, including chillers, elevators, electrical panels, everything that, that does have a, a life to it. So I look forward to presenting additional information to the board and figuring out what costs are associated with us getting this completed. My understanding, and Mr. Enner, correct me if I'm wrong, but districts that actually have completed these assessments long-term save money.
Yeah, when, when you're able to plan in advance, it is. And really, what it comes down to is that you can, you can budget long-term, and you can see where your capital expenses are coming up over three, five, up to 15 years out.
Which, which goes rather nicely into our, our rolling seven-year budgeting process that Mr., through Mr. Fink's guidance at the business operations, that have, we have to put that in place, which reduced our budgeting cycle. I know, he, they probably don't see it day-to-day, but from a board perspective, we see it a much smoother process from years past by having that in place. So that's, that's great. So moving from facilities, we did drop over to our school police and Chief Boyer, who was in attendance at that m-. who was in attendance at that meeting, did talk about our new officer, Officer Bob Greenwood, who started his full day on March fourth, and I believe Bob is here to this evening. So, Chief, if you want to just introduce Bob?
Okay, here's Bob. I'm Dave Boyer, this is Bob Greenwood, he's our newest officer here and by no means new to policing. Been a police officer for thirty-four years. If anybody missed the parade that was on Action News, it was for Bob when he retired. Got a big background in fire and EMS and emergency management. I was a supervisor when he's at Lower Potsco Police Department, involved with a lot of SWAT and training. So, he brings a lot of tools to the thing here. And he's also a, a resident lifelong of Springford, went here, as you can tell.
I'll tell you when I graduated.
Yeah, Paleolithic era, but very good, he's already jumped in. And what did you already tell me, you've done more work now in a week than?
Yeah, as being, being an officer here, you do a lot more hands-on work than being a supervisor. So, it, it's, it feels good to, even though I'm retired, I'm still very active now because I'm, I'm doing a lot of work. And the main reason I, I took this job is because when, when it was advertised or I was told it was going to be for the elementary school level primary and, and I really, you know, being in the fire service and doing fire prevention, I've been out to schools. I've done a lot of educational at the elementary level and it's, it's great to meet the kids and that's what I like, keeps me young.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Bob Squared Away, we're having a good time and a lot of safe-to-say activities. So, he's been very, very busy, I'm happy to say, so thank you.
So, Bob, I got a quick question for you.
Sure.
They, they did air on TV the, what was it, News Watch sixteen or whatever, the parade they had for you. Why didn't they put on the second parade that they had after you left? Which was like double the size.
I mean, that, basically, that, that was, that was a, something that was put together by my employees. I'm actually, my son, my son who's a state trooper, and he, they, they wanted to do that last ride for me and I was very honored. I didn't know the magnitude of it, it was pretty much a secret. I knew it was going to happen, but I didn't know the magnitude and it just, it feels good to be respected like that and have people come out and appreciate you like that.
No, absolutely, and I, I will tell you that with your short time here, I, I've heard only excellent things about you already. So, we're really excited to have you on, on board. And we have one of the top-notch school police departments now in the area. And I, I know Chief Boyer, you're, you've been talking about that, how you've been getting contacted by many districts, wanting to understand how and how we're doing things and, and really understanding the success, our short-term success, you know, since bringing you on board and building up the department. So, it's really exciting to see the staff that we have and bringing, you know, officers on like, you know, Bob, so this is really great. I know the parents are thrilled to have you here as well.
Yeah, when, when I say this to people that I'm actually working for the school, they should go, oh, you're a school resource officer. I go, no, I'm a police officer, we have a police department, it's, I'm proud to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Nice to meet you all.
We did receive, Chief Boyer did tell us, we did receive twenty-five thousand dollars to the Springford Elementary School District for a stadium camera project as well. So, again, we're continuing to enhance our, our security here in the district. There was additional Alice training, there was multiple stop-to-bleed trainings as well throughout the district. We trained over three hundred staff members to date. Discuss the second, uh, safe, discuss safe-to-stay, it's hard to say. Safe, safe-to-stay something program regarding anonymous tips. That's been in effect now and, and over the last few weeks, we've had several instances where it required some investigation by our police department, which has done a great job being on top of things way faster than it even hit Facebook, believe it or not. And majority of the time, by time it hit Facebook, they were so wrong, but that's good. But our, our guys are doing a great jo- and girls are doing a great job. We are looking at different door handles within the district and replacing those for, again, for security reasons. The police procedure manual is complete, is delivered to HR for review and will also be forwarded to the solicitor for review. We are looking at adding in the budget a new, another new, I should say another, as, as our department grows, we have to bring in additional vehicles and we are looking at bringing in, this time, a police pickup truck, which will be buying from through the state, which will be used as a, as a patrol vehicle and also vehicle to transport different things throughout the district during the day and during events. We did, are looking at the possibility of purchasing tasers for the officers and that's being reviewed by our solicitor. And that's, uh... That's pretty much it, oh, one other thing we discussed are moving our current emergency operations plan, EOP, to the emergency county ERIP application plan, assessment drills and NIMS, training for all, all-in-one application. All that means is that it's great training for our officers, that's the best way to say all those acronyms. Other than that, uh, we did go back to facilities and jump into new business because we did give Mr. Hunter a break. This was, we covered this property meeting. Just, we have ongoing projects, I'm not going to go through each one of these. There's, there's just been a lot of projects that are underway with, we've talked about or have already approved as a board. We just got a quick update and things are moving forward and on schedule. And some of the action items was, uh, which was on the agenda this evening. Any questions?
If you have a question, we just approved buying a new police car. I'd like to see what the plan is for growing the police force and vehicles. I mean, rather than just incrementally adding policemen and vehicles, I'd like to see what the plan is for what we're going to do and how we're going to use those policemen throughout the district.
So, Mark, I don't know if you heard, we're going to have exec session next Monday and part of that exec session is to talk about security, which is a now exec session, um, item. So, that's where we will be discussing that.
Great.
Okay, any other questions? Assistant Super, Assistant Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Mr. DeVilla, with the work today on use of facilities, I will have no additional report.
I like that, Solicitor's Report.
Just very briefly, you've mentioned a lot with regard to the, to the police department. Our office is reviewing the police procedures manual at this point. I would anticipate, and it's unusual for districts, but a lot of districts are now expanding their, 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 the police and security presence, that this manual should come to the board for a, an affirmative approval. It's not going to be a classic policy per se, but I, I would like your rubber sta- not rubber stamp, but stamp on it. So, it's, uh, it's been documented that you, you've approved it.
Yeah. Could, yeah, could we give it our high five? Alright, I figured that would be eventually coming. Any, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Real quick, before we jump into agenda, because I wasn't really sure where it fell, but I, before coming, when I got to the meeting this evening, one of the things I did find out was our high school color guard, gold? Gold team is, has been ranked sixteenth in the country. As of this moment, well, actually earlier, because you told me two hours ago. And, you know, for those that may not know how impressive that is, it's extremely impressive because just a four, a few short years ago, we were just starting to, you know, really build out our color guard. Now we have two teams at the high school level and it's really, I mean, the, the competition is fierce and we've really stepped up and put Springford on it and now we're ranked in, ranked highly in the entire country. So, that's awesome, awesome job. Okay, meeting minutes, A and B, any questions? Personnel, A through E. Finance, A through H. Property, A through I, eliminating G because we've already approved that.
You, you have a question on I. Wasn't the ninth grade center refurbished sometime in the early two thousands? And I thought that, did that include windows? So, if that's the case, then I would thought the windows would have lasted more than seventeen, eighteen years.
Mr. Denner, I would have to get the actual installed date of the windows. Ninth grade windows are experiencing, experiencing window failure, where the windows are no longer functioning, no longer opening. Significant areas within the school that are fixed closed. This was brought up for replacement, I believe, last year during one of the board meetings and I was following through with one of the projects that were already, this is one of the projects that were already established.
Is this all windows of the ninth grade are being replaced?
This is phase one, which is fifty-one windows, not counting storefront windows.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, programming curriculum, A through B, A and B. Conferences and workshops, A. Other business, A through D. Board comment?
Just wanted to mention that today, the representatives from Resignance College, who administer the Science in Motion Program, came and presented their offerings so that we can best utilize all the things they have to offer. Mrs. Bass, would you like to comment on how that went today?
It went, it went well, we had some teachers there, Mrs. Vazini was there, Mrs. Rockland and myself were able to talk with the two professors who present and they shared some documentation that we'll make sure gets out to all of our science teachers. We were very happy to discover that many classrooms are already utilizing the program.
Any other board comment? Public to be heard?
Clinton Federman, Limerick Township, question about the new policy, question policy, point of consideration. We have four indoor units that we start rehearsing from December and they compete and rehearse through the end of April. Every Saturday, they're usually in here or in the aux gym or the main gym rehearsing before they go to competition. Would those hours they'd be spending in here be billable for fees?
For what group, Mr. Shat?
Our four indoor units, the indoor color guards.
No, that's all part of one A, that's all, that's all, that's all school-related, that's all school-related.
Okay, so the rehearsal time is good?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, it's just when it turns into a fundraiser-type piece on a weekend if you're using the facility for that type of thing, where it's the, so, where it's the association that's leading the, leading the, the day of, days activities, bringing people from the outside, that type of thing. But everything associated with Mr. Jones and any of the music teachers and their normal groups that are part of the extracurricular contracts or anything like that is all on the one A side of things.
Okay, thank you.
Bill Angler from Upper Providence, I used to be a board member for Exhibit A or the Smith Organization or whatever you want to call it that we were talking about earlier. First, I'd like to thank the usage committee. I've had, I guess it's going to be the privilege of having attended many meetings over the last two and a half years and I know a lot of these issues have been going back and forth. But in the end, what you do every day when you come to these meetings and you, the work you put in while you're at your real job, day job, when you're away from your day job, that's the same work that the people that are running the leagues put in and we all have the same thing in common. We're, we're doing it for the kids and the classroom education, the education on the court, they all go hand-in-hand towards what makes Springford one of the best school districts around. Over the last fifteen years, I've had the privilege of going all over southeast from Pennsylvania, into New Jersey, working with different basketball organizations and other student organizations. And I'm very proud of what we have here, but I'm afraid that we really run the risk of losing it. We've never turned anybody down from our league because they couldn't pay. We found a way, whether it was back in the old days, Bill Keim and John Merton reaching in their own pocket to make sure a kid could play or more recently, starting to do some fundraising to try to make sure kids can play. Every day, every organization that's part of this school is doing fundraising, trying to get more money from the same people. And we don't want to start having to compete with every other organization for the same dime. But at the same time, parents need something to do with their kids. We hear every, you know, every so often you see all the stories about making sure that kids get exercise. Well, during these dark days of winter, as I like to call them, we're, we're one of the only organizations providing that. And we get to provide that because of the help we get from the school district. And, and I think you need to think long and hard about what you're going to do and the impact that's going to have. When you look at these raw numbers, you're looking at raising fees almost fifty percent to a hundred percent from what they currently are. The impact that will have on families is going to be incredible. Again, we talked about this, the dollars everybody's asking for, they can only go so far. But what we give these kids from this program can't be replaced. Kids, we're a big school district, we have all these elementary schools. Many of these kids, the reason they can get through that change when they go from their elementary school up to the fifth through seventh grade center is because you look in their class, there's nobody they know from their old school. But they have kids that they know and they see and they've met through programs like basketball. These things reach way into the school and way into the education. You can't separate the, the youth organization and the activity provided from what happens with the education we're able to provide our kids. The thing I'm proud of about that we've done for this league is what we've done for our senior division. We can't have fifteen varsity basketball teams, right? We can't do that. But we, as a league, with the help of the school, have expanded our senior league to some four hundred kids now. You can go, if you would have went over to the ninth grade center, the seventh grade center over the last couple of weekends, you would have seen, gone in there and seen hundreds of people in the stands to watch rec games. We have kids coming out of this league that, they're not becoming professional basketball players or even high school basketball players, but they're making those memories that get them through high school and we're talking about for years. But they're also developing school skills. Some guys we're going to be seeing on the news and writing newspaper articles and being bloggers. They almost started their career by starting Twitter accounts to, to, to write articles about what was going on in the youth rec league. It's not just basketball, it's much more than that and I'd like to really take a, a long, hard look at that before you make your decision. Thank you.
I just feel like I have to respond to that, that when I first started to speak tonight, I specifically said, we are not in any way trying to eliminate an activity that the kids benefit so much from. I know that firsthand as a parent of twins that are in Springford Youth Basketball. I know what they get out of it and in no way are we trying to handicap that organization or limit the, the function of that, of what that group does. At the same time, we're trying to find a balance, a balance that can be palatable and acceptable. And when you go back and look at it, we're going to put those numbers out. So, let's not jump a gun about what the numbers look like until we work some magic with Mr. Fink and get that. But please understand, we have thought long and hard for three years about growing, revising this, this current policy that is not really in effect. We need to make it so that it works for us, not something that we just have that we all just, we don't look at.
And I understand that and I appreciate that, but at the same time, I walk away from this meeting today after being at many of those meetings over the last two and a half years and, and hearing the positions everybody- half years and hearing the positions everybody and talking to Mr. Fink to get behind those numbers, and quite honestly, I'm even more confused now than I was before I walked in here today about where this policy is going to end up and what this policy is going to mean. We've talked about, you know, trying to work things out and having trust, but I understand that, but when you walk down the line of the board and you hear the different messages, again, I'm walking away today more confused about where we're going to go with this policy than I was before we walked in, and I've read many of the drafts of the policy, and I've seen the incredible changes, and I appreciate the changes, but where that's going to end up, I have no more clarity today than I did when I walked, or now than I did when I walked in the room before the meeting started, in fact, it's probably less.
Well, I think everything will be clear when, at some point, when we're ready to adopt the policy change. I think that in closing with this is that what didn't come out of the presentation this evening is that I'm not sure if everyone in the community fully understands the amount of people and the amount of organizations that are utilizing our facilities and the amount of organizations that are contacting us to utilize our facilities. So, these buildings are used, and if we allowed it, it would be used 24/7. I mean, it's just would constantly, and our number one priority is to provide the facilities for our students during the day and evening associated to the school activities themselves, and then everything else is secondary. And that's why a policy like this is extremely important because of the type of use, the amount of use, and the cost associated to the use, something has to be in place and it has to be fair and equitable for everyone. Any other comment? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I didn't get a motion yet. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I didn't hear it. Did you hear that, Diane? I know. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.